Welcome, ladies and welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Directors study session for Thursday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Could have a roll call, please.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Grasha.
Sorry, here, here, here.
Director Duncan. Vice President Martin.
Here.
President Wright. Thank you. We have Corin.
Okay, let the record reflect that President Wright has an excused absence and will be here back on Monday. Okay. Counselor, would you care to give the rules of procedure?
Yes. So the rules of procedure adopted by the board include the following: all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president is responsible for maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a meeting. The board member regulate, the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is public input and Dory, we have just Pamela Edmondson, is that correct?
As far as I know, I did have a few other members of the public log in. So once Pamela is done, we'll ask them if they care.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead.
Pamela, you may unmute.
Uh.
There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. You may begin.
Uh, this. Okay. Uh, this is Pamela Edmondson. And I thank you for letting me listen in. Um, I want to ask two quick comments, questions. The first is, and I apologize to anyone if it hurts their feelings, but I had a rough week and I'm tired of discrimination. And your website is not real accessible for the blind. In order to, I almost didn't get in today to come to this meeting on time because I couldn't find from your website and and where you're supposed to link. And I went here and there and everywhere. If you could just make another quick link on it, you had to go through agendas and all this and calendars and still couldn't find it. And my husband, Charles, had to do it for me. So if there's any way you could just make it quicker and go directly to the phone-in number and what's on the agenda, it would be so greatly appreciated. And then my second question here is um, you were supposed to have this new system online where we could go in and look at how much water we were using. And I don't know if that's been enacted yet or when it, if it will be. We hooked up a new fountain using water and I'd like to see how much the bill is going to be increasing this month from filling up this fountain. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you very, very much.
Yes, thank you, Pamela, and we'll have somebody get back to you. Do we have her contact information that we can reach out to her later and?
I do, yes.
Okay, all right, Pamela, we'll take care of you. Any other public?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pamela. Ashley Messer, welcome. Are you here to observe or would you like to make public comment?
Just to observe, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sean Harkins, Harkness?
I'm just here to observe, thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Betts, are you here to observe? Or would you like to make public comment? Mr. Betts doesn't appear to have any audio. I'll come back to him. Um, lastly, Robert Griffith, are you here to observe or would you like to make public comment?
Just observing, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Um, Russell Betts still doesn't appear to have any audio.
Okay, well. Let us know when he, uh, when he wants to, we'll give him an opportunity to speak.
Very good, thank you.
Moving on to item six, human resources report.
No, we usually will, um, I see we do have one fifteen-year. Um, and I will talk to wastewater to see if Greg wants to be here at the meeting, but we'll recognize him, that's a significant
On Monday.
Anniversary, yeah, we'll do the most of this on Monday. You can see we have four people with the well, including me, I see I'm on here too. But, uh, we have quite a lot of longevity here, so that says a lot for the district.
My packet doesn't have the the human resources report, so that's okay.
Okay.
Moving on to item seven, Association of California Water Agencies, Region Nine election. At the board's discretion, either concur with the Region Nine Nominating Committee's recommendation, recommended slate of offices or concur on individual candidates for chair, vice chair and five board members and direct the board president to submit the ballot. Uh, does any member of the board have any comments with respect to the Aqua Region Nine election at all?
I, I do.
Yes, Randy, go ahead.
All right, not really common. Uh, in fact, I believe you were either with me or at earshot when we were in Costa Mesa. Patrick O'Dowd uh, came over and greeted us and and we sat and chatted for a while. He is running for vice president and he asked for our support. Um, I obviously couldn't make a commitment on behalf of the board, so I said, you know what, send us a letter with what you're asking for and, uh, we'll bring it up to a board meeting, so if if I'm reading it right, that's why this is on the agenda, he probably the board or the district.
I'm not exactly sure, uh, if he's talking about running. Um, and I, he may have talked to Dory, I don't know. Uh, but I was confused as to whether he was running. He is also on the slate that the nominating committee recommended for Region Nine. But he may be referring to running for the vice president of the board, the whole board at Aqua at this conference this fall.
Yes, that's what it is, is it is for a board seat. He is currently the Chair of Federal Affairs. And he's, he's willing to give that up if he gets the, uh, board, board seat, vice president.
Right, and what Arden was was referring to is correct. He is running for the Region Nine Board, but also has expressed interest in running for the main Aqua Board. So if he does get appointed as vice president to Region Nine, he'll give up that seat to run for uh, vice president of the main Aqua Board.
Yeah, I just as long as we're clear on what it is he's asking of us, whether it's just for Region Nine or the um, or the actual entire organization, uh, board seat.
He's running for, uh, Patrick O'Dowd, Executive Director, is running for Vice Chair of, uh, oh, now I see what you're saying. Are you, you're saying, asking if he's running for Chair, Vice Chair of Region Nine? I think he's running for Vice Chair of the entire organization. I kind of missed out where you guys were because I talked to him not long ago and that was my understanding, he's running for Vice Chair of Aqua.
Yeah.
Uh, and I also heard CBWD go over this. You know, there's one name on here, uh, that I think, uh, you guys might want to take into re, under review and that's Brenda Dinseth. Uh, she's filed what is clearly a unsubstantiated claim against one of our county supervisors and probably, uh, might, uh, raise your concerns, Russ, uh, if you're going to be voting this slate, that would be something that you might want to take a look at. But, uh, I say the full slate only if you agree with, uh, Brenda's, uh, I don't know how you, how you can even separate them out, but, uh, I think when you take a look at that, you'll be, uh,
You, you can vote for them individually if you want.
No.
Well, and just looking, comparing the recommended slate and the individual positions, it's all the same seven people. So the biggest decision I think we have to make is just that candidate for the chair. Um, if we were to go individual, it'd be between Harvey Ryan and James Morales. Other than that, I think it's all the same, whether we pick individual or go with their slate.
Okay, well, hopefully we can get some more clarification before our, uh, meeting on Monday and, uh, reach a decision of whether or not we're going to endorse anybody. Okay. Moving on to item eight, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, certification and adoption of the final initial study and mitigated, mitigated negative declaration for the Vista Reservoir Number Two project. Arden?
Well, I, I merely, I'm gonna have Steve, uh, elaborate on this because he's the engineer that that knows the most about this today. Uh, and first and secondly, I would like to also tell you that um, Brian Macy, uh, who is basically has engineering under him in the organization has, was selected for jury duty today, so
Ah, okay.
will not be here. Uh, he might try to join us at four o'clock when he's done with his court case.
Okay.
Um, but we should be pretty far along on these issues by then.
Are they, are they handling the court, uh, system by via Zoom or on that, or he has to be there?
He has to be there, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, we need to do some improvements at the Vista, the reservoir, it's a, one of the older ones. We're gonna make, um, those preparations, but this is simply for certified adopting the final initial study and Steve can explain that to you. Uh, the reservoir serves a, an area very, very high in the system and it's a unique system since we have some areas that's hard to get at and maybe Steve will get into that or you can ask Danny. It also has a pneumatic system because it is so high and, um, but this merely refers to the um, termination. So with that, Steve, did you want to explain this project?
Uh, sure, I can do that. So as Arden alluded to, the, uh, the board or the district's looking at constructing a second reservoir, a sixty thousand gallon reservoir, welded steel tank at the Vista Reservoir site. Uh, to do so, it would consist of site improvements, drainage improvements. Um, we were going to do some site security improvements since it is in a remote location at the very north end of the district service area, um, you know, putting in fencing, um, and as well as the reservoir itself. There is a hydro pneumatic station as part of that site. We would be relocating that to accommodate the new reservoir. Um, so as part of that process, we had to prepare an initial study to determine what the impacts of the project would be. And if we could either mitigate those uh, impacts or if the impacts didn't rise to the significance of SEQA or if they did, how we could mitigate those. Um, so what we were able to determine was a list of mitigation requirements would offset any impacts of the project. Uh, so for instance, we have a, as part of your packet, we have a mitigation monitoring and uh, reporting program that's a part of the SEQA document. Um, and that's the requirements that we have to follow during construction. And that has certain stipulations regarding, uh, dust control, uh, doing a bird nesting survey before construction, doing a brewing out survey prior to construction, and if there's any bird nesting or brewing out, we'd have to do special requirements to uh, mitigate that before starting construction. And there's also requirements during construction such as stormwater runoff mitigation, you know, your SWIP and BMP improvements and cultural resources, if you find anything of a cultural a, aspect, we have to stop construction and, uh, apply certain mitigation requirements. So those are all detailed in the plan. Um, and what we're asking the board is for approval of the SEQA, SEQA doc, document. Um, and once that's done, we will be following the mitigation requirements during construction and submitting the SEQA document to the State Clearing House for, uh, recording.
Are there, are there any questions?
Okay, if there's nothing on there to
Take a minor action.
Yeah. Take a look at it over the weekend and we'll, uh, address it on Monday. Uh, item number nine, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, certification and adoption of the final initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the groundwater quality protection program, also known as GQPP for Areas H and I Sewer Improvement Project. Arden?
Okay, well, again, I'll let, I'll let Steve explain the details, we, you know.
Mr. Wallen, please use your mic.
Oh. Can you hear me now? Uh, I'll let Steve explain the details again. Uh, it's another mitigated negative deck. Um, so it's not, um, um, a major part of the, um, well, it's a major part of the project, but we're excited that we are soon going to be able to put some more um, connections on to the system, especially once we get our regional plant built, which is imminent. And, um, and we can start looking at, at more of these projects, but now we have some money available to complete the design and and get this project moving forward. And with that, I'll let Steve, um, explain the project to you and the mitigated negative deck process.
Okay, uh, thanks again, Arden. So, um, as most of you are familiar, the district has their groundwater quality protection program. It's the ongoing septic to sewer program. Um, a couple of years ago, the district was successful in receiving grant funding from the Proposition One Disadvantaged Community Involvement Program to help fund the design and, uh, permitting and environmental compliance for these, this H and I project. Uh, so as part of that project, it's the design of, uh, about thirty thousand linear feet of pipe and abatement of, I believe, six hundred and ninety-ish, um, uh, septic tanks and providing sewer laterals to the remaining vacant parcels throughout the Groundwater Quality Protection Program Subarea H and Subarea I. Um, those are generally near the Hacienda and, uh, mountain. Um, is it mountain? Um, forgive me, I don't remember the cross street, but it's kind of in the northwest portion or northeast portion of the district service area. Uh, so again, as part of that process, the district contracted with Tom Dotson and Associates and they did an initial study to determine what the impacts of the project would be. Um, the project did qualify as a project under SEQA and it was found that the project would have adverse impact or adverse, uh, impacts to the environment. So as part of that, we've developed a mitigation and monitoring program to mitigate those impacts. Um, so what's in front of you today is a very similar to what we just talked about for Vista. It's a SEQA, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the project. Um, upon your approval, we be, will be submitted to the State Clearing House, uh, for recording. And during construction, we would be following a very similar mitigation monitoring and reporting program that again looks at, you know, certain aspects like dust control, stormwater pollution prevention, any kind of bird nesting or brewing out, protection of existing utilities within the street, um, what have you, those requirements during construction that must be followed. Um, are there any questions on, um, this item?
If you do want to see the location, it's described in the NOD, um, on seven thirty-one according, but it's not in, in order um, attached to the agenda item. That's all I have.
And Steve, you're real close, it's Mountain View, Hacienda, Mountain View area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't.
Mr. President Martin, before we move on, it looks like Mr. Betts has regained audio.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Betts, are you here to observe or would you like to make public comment today?
Unmuted, I'm fine, I'm just watching the show, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, um, item ten, Acceptance of the North Indian Canyon Sewer Project. Is recommended that the board accept the North Indian Canyon Sewer Project as complete and authorize the release of retention money held uh, for Downing Construction Incorporated in the amount of five percent of the approved contract amount thirty-five days after filing the notice of completion. Arden?
As I'm sure you will remember, we, um, we are doing this project because we need to get now it will be a dry sewer in a part of the road where they're widening it and we didn't want to have to go in after they did the improvements, tear up the street and put the sewer line in, so we agreed, the board agreed when we brought it to you a while back to contract to put in the sewer, the, the, the sewer pipe um, at this time so that we don't, again, so we don't have to basically tear up the, the, the new project, the new street improvements. And, uh, this project has been completed, everything went fairly well. And, uh, all we're asking for today is that we, um, determine that this project is complete and we're recommending that and also that we release the retention.
Okay. Thank you. Item eleven, Critical Services Center and Administration Building Update.
Um, I believe, uh, and I do have a report here, but I think Brian said that he, uh, would like to, um, report on that on Monday if that's
That's fine.
Right?
That's fine.
Okay.
All right. Item twelve, Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update.
Another project that seems to be going quite well. Uh, Steve will give you, um, the progress report on that.
Okay, we're keeping our fingers crossed on that, that we everything goes as planned. Looks like it is, that's great.
Steve?
Yes, thank you again. Uh, so we are making some good headway. Um, we bid the project, uh, back in May and June. Uh, we opened bids on July twenty-second and the district received five bids. Um, we've been evaluating those bids, the bid amount ranged from forty point eight million up to, uh, excuse me, forty point nine million up to fifty point eight million. Um, so there's kind of a big gap, uh, in that, you know, about a ten million dollar swing from your low bidder to your high bidder. Um, in addition, our low bidder was about twenty percent higher than where we had the engineer's estimate. Um, there are many factors that lead to that and I want to go ahead and dive into those next month when we bring this, uh, the uh, construction award in front of the board. Um, so we will be getting into that in more detail. We just received the, uh, the bid review confirmation from the consultant AECom uh, and, uh, recommending the, that we go ahead and move forward with the award to the low bidder. Um, so we'll be preparing that package and bringing it back to the board for consideration next month. Um, in addition, we're getting closer, um, with our SRF approval process. Um, so right now, the kind of, uh, funding approval document has made its way up to the deputy director's desk. Um, and we're actually giving some good news, um, in August. Uh, the State Water Resource Control Board approved an additional hundred million dollars in grant funding for different types of projects and they want to actually focus on getting this hundred million dollars out before the end of the year and specifically trying to fund septic to sewer related projects. Uh, so while we are a little bit behind schedule with the project, we couldn't have found ourselves, uh, with better timing with respect to that additional funding. Um, what we are in discussions with, with the state board and why the document is with the deputy director currently is they are currently evaluating, giving the project additional grant funding. Um, now, if you recall, we were slated to receive eight million in small community wastewater grant funding and another eight million towards the, the project or the overall program out of the groundwater grant program. Um, so we were already slated to receive about sixteen million in grant funding from those two programs. Uh, we don't know how much we're going to receive out of additional grant funding we'll receive out of this infrastructure funding. Um, but we will be receiving, uh, another chunk of grant funding from there. Um, I've had a lot of discussions with staff and, you know, I'm really hopeful that that's going to get finalized. I was actually, I had my phone call. Uh, we have weekly phone calls with the state. I had my phone call at one o'clock this afternoon and they're expecting to have the deputy director sign off and, uh, and formalize or firm up that amount of grant funding, um, early next week. Um, so I think that's rather good news, knowing that there have been some increases in construction costs as shown with our, our, the, our low bidder being about twenty percent higher than the engineer's estimate. Um, so that's going to help close some of that funding gap, um, by receiving additional grant funding towards the project. Um, right now, once that, uh, kind of funding is finalized, that gets programmed into the draft funding agreement. It goes through the state board, our state staff level up through the deputy director for signature and then we'll be bringing it back to the district for approval of the draft funding agreement. Um, we're slight, we should have that ready, we're hoping to have that ready for October, but it's looking like that might get pushed to November. Um, so we're, we're going to be a little bit, uh, behind with awarding the project and getting the final agreement in place, but we have been told that we will have our construction eligibility date by the end of this month. And what that means is that the board has signed off on the project, they fought, signed off on all the funding and they've set the date on when the district is eligible for reimbursement for any construction related expenses on the project. Um, so that for us is really a, a key date to have. And then going forward from there would just be procedurally, uh, approving and adopting the great draft funding agreement with the state. Um, so a lot of moving parts to both, um, the bidding of the regional plant and finalizing the SRF agreement. Um, and those are kind of working through roughly on parallel pair, um, parallel paths. Um, and we're going to keep pushing as best we can to get them both on the October board agenda for your review. Um, any questions on, on that or any of those items?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, that, am I understanding that, uh, one of those grants or, or, uh, there was a grant, uh, that, uh, we were eligible for, but I, my, my understanding was that was for part of the collection system in the Dos Palmas area, brownstone area. Um, is that true and it, or, or are you, what's, what's been authorized as far as funding, grant funding for the plant itself? Because my understanding is there's three elements to this, the collection system, the conveyance line and the uh, plant. And if all those things come in at the same, uh, percentage, we're above our bonding capacity or, or, or I guess we can borrow more money, but when does this get to be up, up to a point where, uh, we're getting in over our heads for uh, our community's ability to, uh, fund this project in its entirety? Because it feels like we're there now, you're, 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 you know, it looks like we were, we were talking at twenty-five million, now we're at forty million for the one, for the plant and, and that's going to take a hundred and sixty or two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day off of, of, of the Horton plant, which we have extraordinary issues with. And, um, my concern is that we're going to be spending somewhere around seventy million dollars for a plant that's going to give us ten percent relief that we could get just by, um, expanding the plant e, even a little bit that we already have at service. And that's just something I, I'm concerned with and I know we've kind of addressed this before, but that was before we knew we were facing ten million dollars in fines from over, uh, utilizing the Horton plant. So there's a mess that I want somebody to unwind at some point, uh, without, uh, you know, without delay. I, I'm, I'm really worried about overextending the agency and I think we're already there. Thank you.
Great, Steve.
Uh, great questions, Director Grasha. I'll do my best to answer the ones I, I can answer today. Um, first off, you are correct, we, there are three components of the project. Um, you had those correct, the treatment plant, the conveyance line trunk sewer to get flows to the new plant and the collection system and septic abatement for the area, um, M two, uh, which is over off of Dos Palmas. Um, the grant funding isn't specifically for one component or the other. Since we have one application with a, with a program with three different components, the grant funding that we're slated to receive can be applied to all three proj, projects. So again, we're getting eight million, um, out of the small community wastewater and then we're going to get eight million out of the groundwater grant program. Um, and the small community wastewater is more geared towards, uh, the treatment plant, whereas the groundwater grant program is more geared towards the septic to sewer and the flows from that new septic to sewer, uh, it's kind of percent of the conveyance line and it's percent of the treatment plant, if that makes sense. So I think that area M two is going to generate two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand gallons. So whatever the capacity is of the, the sewer lines and the conveyance line delivering the flows to the treatment plant, it would cover three hundred thousand of that one and a half million gallon like a percentage wise. So again, that groundwater grant funding can be used for the septic to sewer for the actual abatement of the septic tanks, which is, which is a little bit different than we're typically doing. Um, the state specifically wanted the district to abate the tanks, uh, and go on private, you know, get agreements with the private citizens and, and go on their, their lot and actually abate the tank and connect the house to the system as part of this program. Um, so that's why we have a, a bit more funding out of that, uh, groundwater grant program and so we can complete that and those flows would immediately be connected to the new treatment plant as part of this program and with this funding from the state. Um, I don't have, I'd have to work with, uh, the finance department with respect to your, uh, other question and how the district finances the program as a whole. That's not my area of expertise, so unfortunately I can't answer that for you.
I, and, but I'm going to elaborate on that and I don't know if, if, uh, Arturo wants to elaborate on that. I, and we've gone over this for, for a decade and it included a series of different efforts on our part to put this project together. And the effort was to very successfully finance it and we have, we're talking about at a minimum right now of sixteen million dollars in grants and then at a minimum right now of $16 million in grants, and then on, and we, we're not bonding, we're doing SRF funding at a .9 financing, that financing is to die for. And our financial situation as established by our strategic financial plan put in place the rates and everything so that it did, that it did consider the construction of this regional plant. It expands our service area so that we can increase the revenues that we can service. Everything that you've talked about, Director Grasha, has been considered, and we, this is the most fortunate time in history that we can be looking at to put a project like this together. This district has never before seen financing like this, and it may never see it again. And this, what we did announce to you today is even more good news, that the state is considering putting even more grant money into this project than they originally planned.
Okay.
We look, I look forward to the hard numbers being presented, because I'm not convinced that you know, these, these grants or things, typically the board gets to see the application, it gets to hear from the grant writers, and typically, these are things that go to the board for approval, and during these meetings, we just hear about this mysterious group out there that's coming up with all these millions of dollars, and you know, I'm kind of new here, but I've been around the block a few times, and I've never known a grant to be issued that wasn't requested formally by the board, so looking forward to some hard, our hard facts on those issues, thank you.
Well, we've done our best to keep you informed before you actually are presented with this, we're getting to that point, and what we, what we did report to you is that we will be back next month to put this package together, and at that point, that's what Steve was telling you today, we will have that financing proposal in place, and, and the second part to that is that the state is reviewing us to be sure that we are financially stable to meet our obligation with regard to this project. And I can, I can assure you that you will have all that information in front of you, plus confirmation from the state that they agree with us that we are very capable of handling this financially.
Director Grasha, Arden, excuse me, I'd like to also add to Director Grasha's question. We started this process, this SRF process back in 2019, so we've been at it for quite some time. The, the application may not have come in its completed form directly in front of the board, but we've been back at every step of the way with the approval of the environmental impact report with certain certification forms and approvals that the board passed at one point or another to allow us to go after this grant. The last two and a half years, or two years, two years and two months, we've been going through the review and approval process for this SRF funding, so it's been quite a long duration. Staff has all the information, a completed application package, we'd be happy to provide. It is rather comprehensive, because it includes the EIR, it includes the preliminary design report for the treatment plant, so again, we have all that information, we're happy to share it, but to what the general manager just mentioned, next month, when we come back for award, we're going to need to, we'll be working with finance and with the general manager to be able to show you, show you those numbers on, to get, be able to get approval for construction, frankly. So we'll have to look into that and come back next month with those numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Okay, moving on to the item 13, Groundwater Sustainability Plan Update.
We've been, we've been working on, again, we were one of the select group of agencies in the state, I think just a handful that were allowed to do an alternative plan, and we, and, and now, we're also part of the Sangagornio Plan, which is a groundwater sustainability plan, both are going quite well, and Steve is going to give you the progress report on that. We will be back to you at the end of this year, that's why I wanted to get this in front of you. It's been in front of you, I think, twice so far. And the other one, our Mission Creek Alternative Plan has been in front of you a number of different times. But these plans are due in 2022, and we just, we've been working, and we want to, I want to have this in front of you so you understand what we will need to do when we come to you in December to get the final approval to submit it. Okay, Steve, you're on board.
Well, I do have a question. Since President Wright is not in attendance, is the prefer, do you want me to wait until Monday to give the presentation, or would you rather have me do it now, I'm ready to do it now, but it is about a 30-minute presentation, it's comprehensively covers what the Alternative Plan Update is, the information in it, that's going to be going out to the public for review in the next month, so I'm ready to give that presentation, but knowing that President Wright's not here, I thought I would offer to wait till Monday if desired by the directors and the general manager.
Oh, I, yes, I think Monday would be better with Nancy in prison.
That's a good point, thank you, Steve.
Sure, and then, so I'll defer, and I'll be back on Monday to give that presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, item 14, Approval of Minutes, take a look at the minutes for the study session, the board meeting, and special meeting for any corrections and/or additions, and we'll make those changes, if any, on Monday. Register of Demand, item 15.
I haven't had any time to go through it, but maybe, maybe Monday I'll have some.
Okay, you got the weekend, take your time, and we'll all take a look at that over the weekend. Item 16, Board Compensation, Recommended to Authorize Board Compensation for the Following Participation in the Palm Springs Unified School District Legislative Breakfast on October 8th. I believe I received a email from them saying that that was kind of canceled, and it was going to be a Zoom meeting instead.
That is correct, Vice President Martin, but the item had already been added to the agenda, so.
Okay. That's all right, that's all right. So.
No questions?
Yeah. We'll discuss that more on Monday, see if anybody wants to participate via Zoom. Correspondence, a thank you letter from Gerald McKenna. That was a rather interesting letter in reaching out to someone who had received a lot of misinformation on social media, and was given a tour by our waste treatment facility, the Horton Plant.
He was a gentleman, very nice. And I should let, really Danny.
Is he, I'm sorry, I didn't know Danny was online.
Danny?
Danny, are you there?
Do you want to, you want to share with the board? Yeah, we invited him to the plant, showed him everything he needed.
Yeah.
Danny, you want to expand on that a little?
I think you covered quite a bit of it, but what I can add is, we invited them to the plant and had a open conversation. He had a lot of good questions, we answered them. He understood what we do there, understood what took place with the temporary pond initially in October, and again, what took place in March, and was satisfied with what he saw there, so it was a good opportunity to reach out to the public, and he thanked us for it.
I want to thank him for the nice letter that he wrote in response to that.
Yes, and not only thanks to Mr. McKenna, but good work, Danny, reaching out, and also the staff that also participated in that, that was, that was awesome, thank you very much.
I'll extend that up, thank you.
All right. Director's Report, Upcoming Events and Director's Report, does anybody want to give their presentation today, or they want to wait until Monday? Ivan?
I can go today, I just have the one to report on. August 30th through September 2nd, attended the CSDA Conference. This is the first conference since COVID that I've attended. As always, I think CSDA tends to have some of the best keynote speakers, and both of their keynotes are very good, lots of great advice, and were very entertaining. They did have a good range of breakouts, I attended quite a few. One was on social media and the Brown Act. Another was a long-term strategic planning breakout. Many of the suggestions of Martin Roush were already implementing here at the district, so that was good to see that we're kind of on track as far as our long-term planning. And then one of the best breakouts, I think I attended, was on the state assistance program for unpaid water bills, and they shared a lot of key deadlines and how to apply, and Brian was actually in the breakout with me, and he mentioned that we were already working on our application, and I believe that was this past week that they were due, so hopefully we got all of our applications in, and there was quite a bit of talk of a lot of money out there to help with customers that are in need, and even talk about customers' bills that have been placed on the tax rolls, and how we can go about giving them a credit, should we receive the funding, so overall.
We go over that a little bit in the General Manager's Report, Arturo has been on top of it. We get several calls, we had everything in on time?
Perfect.
Okay.
So, yeah, overall, I thought the conference was good, and it was nice to get back in person.
Okay. Yes, I also attended that, and I will be reporting my experiences at the CSDA conference, I'll be doing that on Monday. Randy, do you want to give yours now, or?
Monday, if I could, please.
Director Grasha, you want to use yours today, or wait till Monday?
Well, I just think I have a comment, so we'll save it for the next Director Comments.
Okay. All right. Item 19, General Manager's Report.
Well, before I, I let Arturo give you the financial report, which might be our last one before we have to close for the audit. I, you'll have a lot of information in here, the one thing I did notice was that our usage for both July and August, which I mentioned last time, was down quite a bit. Our flows at the wastewater plant are still up there, so we, we need to get this plant built ASAP. And that is essentially all I have, I may be zooming in in the meeting in October, just to give you a heads up, I have a family thing that I need to do that, during that meeting, and and unfortunately, it was planned right during the meeting dates. With that said, Arturo, do you want to present the financial?
Of course. Distinguished members of the board, general manager and staff, I'm going to quickly go over.
Could you, Arturo, you're getting a lot of echo, and it's hard to understand.
Yeah. Arturo, is your mic on as well?
It is.
Okay. How about we turn on Arturo's mic and mute the boardroom?
Well, if, yeah, can you just turn your mic off, because I think we can hear you?
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
I'll be loud. I'm going to quickly go over the.
I'm sorry, guys, it's, the recording's not going to pick that up.
Kurt, could you mute the boardroom's mic, and then just have Arturo's mic on? That might work.
There, I've muted the boardroom, Arturo, turn your mic on. Arturo?
How's that?
Try again?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, oh no, still crazy feedback. Can you step up to the podium? Boardroom is muted now, if you guys are speaking, I can't hear you. Here we go.
All right, we'll do it on my end.
Okay. District Council Comments.
Yes, just briefly, today, Arden Wollam and I, along with attorney Sean Murphy, attended mediation in the Mission Springs versus Master Meter case, obviously, mediations are confidential, so I can't discuss an open session, anything that occurred during mediation, but we may, I'm waiting to hear back from Sean Murphy on his availability for Monday, and hopefully, we can have a closed session, just to give you an update on what occurred during the mediation today.
Okay.
And then we have, on the Mission Springs versus DWA case, we do have a hearing that's set for September 24th, and the purpose of that hearing is just to set the trial date on the writ cause of action, so we won't have anything to report to you this month, but we'll, we'll keep you informed after the 24th, after we have something new to report to you.
Okay.
And then, I don't think we have anything new to report on PDA at this time.
Okay. Moving on to item 21, Director's Comments. Start off with Director Grasha, you had some comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, you know, if you remember back a few meetings ago, I had made a comment that that the agencies should consider a a, some kind of opportunity to discuss the history of the two agencies, and apparently, and joyously, until I saw it, Desert Water Agency took me up on that request, and had their 60th anniversary just yesterday, and did a very nicely produced Zoom to talk about the history of the Desert Water Agency. However, there was some information in that Zoom that couldn't be addressed at the time, because they didn't allow public input. That was very troubling to the facts, and so I will separately from my position as a board member, be making my feelings known as a private member of the community at some point in the future. Hopefully, Desert Water will be willing to have a conversation about my concerns, and be able to keep this from becoming a thing, because, believe me, the separation between the truth and what was said was almost diabolical, so with that, I'll leave it. Thank you very much for this minute.
Sure. Director Duncan, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you.
Director Sewell, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have one comment, I attended a city council meeting on September 7th, and midway through the council meeting, Councilwoman Jan Pie had a medical emergency and had to be rushed to the hospital, and I wanted to give everybody an update on there, that later that evening, she's released from the hospital after treatment, and she is recuperating at home, and hopefully by the next meeting, she'll be back on the diocesan council meeting. She certainly was missed for the second half of that council meeting, and we look forward to her attendance at the next meeting. And that concludes my comments, anything further from our general manager?
Nothing more to add, oops, excuse me.
Nothing more to add. Okay. If there's nothing else, no further action taken, this meeting is adjourned.